Do you like me to sing?
No, please. Mr. Attorney, he can entertain us.
I can what?
Entertain us.
You don't want to hear me sing or dance.
Couple of magic tricks.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call the June 5th, 2023 Crest Hill City Council Meeting to order at 7:00 PM. If everyone would please rise for the Pledge Ladies to the Flag. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the true government of our citizens, one nation, one home, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, please, Chris.
Ray Solomon.
Here.
Glenn Conklin.
Present.
Scott Dyke.
Here.
John Boucher.
Here.
Darrell Jefferson.
Here.
Claudia Gazal.
Here.
Tina Oberlin.
President.
Mark Sepiti.
Here.
Nate Albert.
Here.
And Joe Kubal.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, you have before you the minutes of the city council meeting held on May 15th, 2023. Motion would be in order.
So moved, second.
We have motion by Alderman Albert, seconded by Alderman Jefferson, for the approval of the minutes of May 15th, 2023. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Scott Dyke.
Here, yes.
John Boucher.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sepiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
And Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
We have the minutes of the work session held on May 2nd, 2023. Motion would be in order.
So moved.
Second.
We have motion by Alderwoman Gazal, seconded by Alderman Albert, for the approval of the minutes of the work session held on May 2nd, 2023. Questions or comments? Roll call.
John Boucher.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sepiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
You have before you the minutes of the work session held on May 8th, 2023. Motion would be in order.
So moved.
So moved.
Motion by Alderwoman Gazal, seconded by Alderman Jefferson, for the approval of the minutes of the work session held on May 8th, 2023. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sepiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Boucher.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
And Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
And finally, you have before you the minutes of the work session held on May 22nd, 2023. Motion would be in order.
So moved, second. Scott.
We have motion by Alderman Dyke, seconded by Alderman Jefferson, for the approval of the minutes of the work session held on May 22nd, 2023. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sepiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Boucher.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, we have several special guests in the audience this evening. I would ask for council's concurrence to deviate to the agenda item under the mayor's report, a proclamation recognizing the 45th anniversary of A.B. Gusto's Bar and Grill in the city of Crest Hill. It is our normal procedure to read the proclamation, so I would ask for the reading of the proclamation to begin with Alderman Dyke.
Thank you, Mayor. The proclamation recognizing the 45th anniversary of A.B. Gusto's Bar and Grill in the city of Crest Hill.
Whereas Annie Osborn and Ben "Bill" Zimmerman opened A.B. Gusto's on June 10th, 1978, at 2115 Plainfield Road in the city of Crest Hill, and successfully operated a profitable business for 19 years. Holy macros.
Whereas Brian Lewandowski, after working many years in the bar and restaurant industry, purchased the business on September 8th, 1997, and added food in addition to drinks, and has successfully operated A.B. Gusto's Bar and Grill for the past 26 years, and...
Whereas A.B. Gusto's Bar and Grill, over the years, has been an active supporter of the local business community for their support of the family outreach food pantry as a distribution site of many years. Throughout their community, turkey fry, with food being donated to Morning Star Mission, and by their support of the Special Recreation Association of People with Special Needs, and...
Whereas A.B. Gusto's Bar and Grill annually supports the 100 Club of Crest Hill and Will County by sponsoring several fundraisers throughout the year, is a member of the bi-local organization to support local small businesses in the community, and has sponsored several softball, baseball, and kickball leagues, and numerous other organizations and programs throughout Will County over the past 26 years, and...
Whereas A.B. Gusto's Bar and Grill has been a well-run and successful business for many years, and has operated a business that has been supportive of the community needs, thus making the city of Crest Hill a better place to live, and...
Whereas A.B. Gusto's Bar and Grill has been a Crest Hill gathering place for many years, forming many new friendships filled with lifelong memories, and continue to dedicate themselves to inspiring their patrons to help those in need.
Now therefore, I Raymond R. Solomon, by virtue of the authority vested in me as the mayor of the city of Crest Hill, do hereby proclaim June 10th, 2023, be observed as A.B. Gusto's Bar and Grill Day in the city of Crest Hill, and hereby congratulate A.B. Gusto's Bar and Grill on its 45th anniversary, and encourage all citizens to salute them from their efforts and accomplishments, given under my hand and the corporate seal of the city of Crest Hill this 5th day of June, 2023. Raymond R. Solomon, Mayor.
So moved, as presented.
Second.
We have motion by Alderperson Oberlin, seconded by Alderwoman Gazal, for the approval of the proclamation. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sepiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Boucher.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
I'd like to introduce Brian and Joy Lewandowski. First of all, congratulations on 45 years at A.B. Gusto's. I know you've been the owners for the past 26 years, but for all these years, A.B. Gusto's was run very professionally, very successfully, and it is still run that way today, and that is because of the leadership of both you and your wife, Joy. So I want to congratulate you on the honor that we have bestowed on you. Again, I want to wish you many, many more years of successful business in the city of Crest Hill. Keep up the good work, and it is my honor and privilege as the mayor of the city of Crest Hill to present to both of you a copy of this proclamation for you to hang proudly inside the bar and/or wherever you would like, and certainly accept our congratulations, and we are very, very proud to have you in the city of Crest Hill.
Thank you so much. Just want to take a quick moment and thank everyone who's supported us and stocked in our business for the time that we've owned it. Couldn't do it without our local regular customers, so we appreciate that so much, and if you have not been in in many years, please stop in because we have major changes inside the building and done a lot there, so we hope to be here a long time. Love the small community, love all of our regulars, so thank you so much. Appreciate it.
I will open it up from council for any comments you'd like to make.
I would like to make a comment. I get to know, go ahead, you want to go?
Go ahead.
I get to know Brian through the pandemic. We worked really close together. I get to know an amazing person who donates a lot of his time and his money and his, your cooking, whatever you do, and every time I reach out to you to donate money or to donate food for the outreach, the volunteers, you never hesitate and said no, so from the bottom of my heart, I want to thank you for everything you've done and continue doing for our community. You are a great example. Congratulations.
Oh, if you're feeling hungry, just take a ride up there. You can go out, sit in the back underneath an umbrella, a metal chair and tables, and service will be out there, plus he has a good potmalt sandwich. And his hamburgers are good too. They're only that tall, so there's something to eat if you go. They're good. Congratulations.
I want to thank you, and your buddy Fred Hunsinger, who is moving away from us within today, and I told him you were going to, you were going to get there, he wanted to make sure. I said congratulations from him as well, and I hope you had a good turnout yesterday. It was nice. I was working in my yard and I didn't need headphones. It was really nice, because I literally can see from my yard. So I was out there, I don't know, didn't need any headphones, but congratulations. Keep up the great work, and nothing says a good businessman more than the community spirit, so thank you for all that.
Well, congratulate you for all your years of business, all you've done for Crest Hill, helping out in the community and that. It's always good to see a business that has been in the community a long time and has been part of the landscape here. Not a lot of businesses can claim 45 years in business, so congratulations and thank you.
Brian and Joy, you know how much I enjoy your burgers, so thank you for the amazing service that you continue to provide whenever we're in there. It's a great atmosphere and great prices too for that great food, so thank you.
Okay, I would like to turn it over to our city clerk Christine Boucher-Hall for a presentation.
Laurie, could you read them, please? I just want to say, I'm so glad we got into this building finally and we could honor you, and we have your wonderful family and great friends here for you, so I just want to read a little resolution from us. A resolution honoring Laurie Thrasher on her retirement with the city of Crest Hill, whereas Laurie Thrasher began her career with the city of Crest Hill on September 28th, 1987, and whereas Laurie Thrasher is a resident employee who served the residents of Crest Hill as administrative clerk within the city of Crest Hill Clerk's Office and the city of Crest Hill Plan Commission, and whereas Laurie Thrasher is involved in many organizations such as the Crest Hill Lions Club and Rusty Nut's Card Club, and whereas Laurie Thrasher participated with the Memorial Committee, Touch of Summer, Take Back the Night, Memorial Day Parade, and initiated the Crest Hill Christmas Card Collection for Operation Cure Package, and whereas Laurie Thrasher retired from the city of Crest Hill on February 3rd, 2023, and the city of Crest Hill wishes to recognize her for her commitment, dedication, and loyalty, along with her excellent service to the citizens of the city of Crest Hill, and express our appreciation and admiration of her work for the past 35 years. Now therefore, being resolved by the mayor and the city council of the city of Crest Hill, Will County, Illinois as follows. Section 1, the mayor and city council of the city of Crest Hill wish to express their heartfelt gratitude and a profound expression of thanks to Laurie Thrasher for her dedicated years of service to the citizens of Crest Hill. Section 2, the mayor and city council extend their best wishes to Laurie Thrasher for her productive, joyous future and for her continued success in whatever endeavor she chooses. Section 3, the Crest Hill city clerk is directed to forward a copy of this resolution to Laurie Thrasher and make the original of this resolution available to members of the general public during normal business hours at the city of Crest Hill Clerk's Office. Resolved this 5th day of June, 2023, Christine Boucher-Hall, city clerk, approved this 5th day of June, 2023, Raymond R. Solomon, mayor. Congratulations.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for presenting me with this resolution for my retirement. I would like to thank all of my amazing coworkers. We have shared many good times together and supported each other through the tough times. Thank you to my friends and family who are here with me tonight to support me. I thoroughly enjoyed working with and getting to know many of the residents during my 35 years with the city. Thank you for allowing me to serve you. I'm looking forward to what the future has in store for me. I thank you all, and I wish you a good night.
Laurie, I can't make it wrong.
Laurie, I told you you were going to enjoy retirement, and I know that you are. It's a great thing, but I want to certainly thank you on behalf of all the residents of the city of Crest Hill for your years of service to the city, because you did improve the quality of life for many, many residents in this city. You treated everybody with courtesy and respect, and I thank you for that.
Thank you.
So I wish you, I wish you good health and I wish you good in all of your future endeavors, for whatever you decide to do, and I know you have many things on your plate.
Thank you. I'm busier now than I was when I was working.
With that, anybody from council for a comment?
Yeah, Laurie, when I go up to city hall now, I walk in, it's so peaceful. Nobody gives me a hard time at office number. I really miss you. I really miss you.
Congratulations, Laurie. Glad to see that, you know, you're enjoying your retirement. Everything's going good for you. Well, thank you for all you've done, not only for the city and its residents, but other things that you have done for the community itself, so thanks again for everything. Laurie, obviously you were a staple here in the city of Crest Hill, and I'm just grateful to be your friend and to see you just as much since you've retired as you did when you worked here, so I appreciate your friendship. Thank you.
Well, Laurie, I still see you all the time, so, but I talked to you and you told me how much you were busier now than you were before, and I told you that was going to happen, because the minute you're free, people give you lots of things to do, but enjoy all of it and just savor every day. Thank you.
Well, Laurie, I'm happy that you decided to have the council be part of this resolution as well. We know all the work that you have dedicated throughout the years, and congratulations on what you've done, and thank you for your service.
Okay, I know we have a lot of special guests in the audience tonight, both for Laurie and for A.B. Gusto's.
We need a motion for roll.
So moved, so moved.
I forgot about that.
Oh.
We have motion by Alderman Albert, seconded by Alderman Dyke, for the approval of the proclamation. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Mark Sepiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Boucher.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
And Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Motion carries, resolution 1174.
Okay, I'll start over. I know that we have a lot of special guests in the audience tonight, honoring both A.B. Gusto's on 45 years and Laurie Thrasher on 35 years on her retirement from the city of Crest Hill, so if anybody in the audience would like to step to the podium and make any comments, now is your opportunity. Deputy Chief Dobbs.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'd like to make a quick comment about Laurie. We had our annual cop on our rooftop just a couple weeks ago. I know a number of people from the council came and visited, but Christine encouraged me to reach out to Laurie to help volunteer that day, and she was very generous in donating her time, and I remember telling her, hey, we start at 5:00 AM, is that too early? And she was like, well, that's way earlier than I'm used to in retirement now, but she's very gracious in coming there and helping out, and again, she's been a big supporter with the police department and functions over the years, so I just want to personally thank you for your help and service in those functions. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Comment? Phil?
Well, a few years ago, when I became a member of the planning commission, the first thing that struck me was how well-prepared we were and how well the meeting went, and as the months went on, I did have a problem with my neighbor saying, why is it that the policeman come to your house once a month with this green envelope? What's going on there? Well, that was Laurie's preparation, which was incredible, and when I became the chairman of it, I even appreciated Laurie more. I've learned to realize that a good or bad meeting is only due to the minutes that come out from that meeting, and Laurie was responsible for some incredible minutes that were so easy to use as references for future meetings, so Laurie, thank you so much, and I just have to say that you should be very proud that you've left the planning commission in such good hands with Karen and Samantha. They've picked up right where you left off, so thank you for everything you've done.
Thanks, Phil. Jackie?
So Laurie knows this is a big deal if I'm getting up here to talk, but I want to thank Brian. I'm with the president of the Crest Hill Lions Club, and Brian accommodates us the first Thursdays of the month for our meetings, and you have been so welcoming. Your food is amazing. Lisa accommodates us. She sets us all up and everything, so thank you so much for taking care of us. And Laurie, I met Laurie many, many years ago in the 50th anniversary for the city of Crest Hill, and we have become amazing friends. She is such a valuable asset to the Lions Club, and I know she was a valuable asset to the city of Crest Hill, so congratulations to you both.
Last call. Okay, you're certainly more than welcome to stay. We understand if you don't, but if you want to stay, you're more than welcome. So we're going to continue with the agenda items, back to the beginning of the agenda, to our city attorney, Mike Steph. Good evening, Mike.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I have one agenda item. It's the approval of a memorandum of understanding between the city of Crest Hill, Officer Ryan Tetlow, and the Metropolitan Alliance of Police, number 15. This was discussed in executive session. Unfortunately, the memorandum of understanding that was drafted by John Kelly was vetted by CCMSI, which is the city's third-party claims administrator, and they had a couple of modifications that they wanted. We have not heard back from them as to exactly what they want, so I'm recommending or asking for a motion to table that till the next meeting.
So moved.
Second.
We have motion for a tabling of the memorandum of understanding by Alderman Sepiti, seconded by Alderwoman Gazal. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Boucher.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sepiti.
Yes.
And Nate Albert.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
So we'll get with CCMSI and we'll get a clean copy that will be in your package for the next meeting. Aside from that, I'm happy to entertain any questions that you might have.
Any questions of city attorney? All right, thanks, Mike. Moving on, city administrator, we do not have any agenda items. Public Works, we do not have any agenda items. City engineer, our city engineer, Ron Weideman. Good evening, Ron.
Thank you, Mayor. I've got several items to go over tonight. First item is I'm looking for a motion to execute a professional service agreement with V3 companies to prepare plans, specs, and bid documents for Circle, Green, and Oakland Water Main and roadway replacement contracts. These three locations are scheduled to go out to construction next year and the year after that. These are one of the, are three of the top 10 bad locations that have been identified by Public Works, so we'd like to kind of get out and get the project put together so we can get some accurate price, you know, bid costs for budgeting.
So moved, second.
We have motion by Alderman Albert, seconded by Alderman Sepiti, for the approval to excuse a professional service agreement with V3 companies to prepare plans, specifications, and bid documents for Circle, Green, and Oakland Water Main replacement and roadway rehabilitation contract. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Boucher.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sepiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
And Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
The next item, I'm looking for a motion to authorize the mayor to execute a professional service agreement with Christopher Burke Engineering to prepare plans, specs, and bid documents for Kelly Avenue and Cora Street retaining wall replacement contracts for a not-to-exceed amount of $54,680.
So moved, as presented.
Second.
We have motion by Alderperson Oberlin, seconded by Alderwoman Gazal, for the approval to authorize the mayor to execute a professional services agreement with Christopher B. Burke Engineering Limited to prepare plans, specifications, and bid documents for the Kelly Avenue and Cora Street retaining wall replacement contract not to exceed the amount of $54,680. Questions or comments?
Ron, is this, is this one of them where the, there's some grants available to help with the funding?
No, no, currently we have out, which is construction will be starting anytime now, that's replaced the ones at Highland and, and the east side of Cora. We got a rebuild Illinois grant for that. This is the next stage. We don't have any grants, but these are the two bigger walls that are along this section, so again, for, we know we need to replace them out at some point. They're getting bad, so we just want to get the design done and try to, you know, budgeting purposes, some plans on shelf.
Great, thank you.
And if some comes up, we'll, we'll work, yeah, we'll work, you know, on grants.
There's also the theater one for the D.C.E.O.
Great, thanks.
Okay, roll call, Chris.
Mark Sepiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Boucher.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
And Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
All right, next part of this is to authorize the mayor to execute a professional service agreement with Geotech Inc. to conduct field survey work for the preparation of easement documents for the Kelly Avenue and Cora Street retaining wall replacement contract for a not-to-exceed amount of $9,000, and obviously, this is required in order to, we're going to need this to build a new wall. It requires some temporary construction.
So moved, second.
All right, motion by Alderman Jefferson, seconded by Alderman Boucher, for the mayor to authorize...
Alderman Dyke.
Or Dyke, my fault. Authorize the mayor to execute a professional service agreement with Geotech Incorporated to conduct field survey work for the preparation of easement documents for the Kelly Avenue and Cora Street retaining wall replacement contract not to exceed the amount of $9,000. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sepiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
And John Boucher.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
The next item is to award the contract to Sheridan Plumbing and Sewer for the US 30 Plainfield Road 10-inch water main lining maintenance project in the amount of $2,831,319.50. This was discussed at the last workshop. Any questions?
So moved, second.
We have motion by Alderman Albert, seconded by Alderman Sepiti, to award the contract to Sheridan Plumbing and Sewer for the Plainfield Road 10-inch water main lining maintenance project in the amount of $2,831,319.50, and this project is long, long overdue with all the water main breaks on that stretch. Questions or comments? Roll call.
John Boucher.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sepiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
And Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Next, I look to a motion to approve a construction engineering contract with Robinson Engineering in the amount of $208,000.
So moved.
Second.
We have motion by Alderwoman Gazal, seconded by Alderman Albert, to approve the construction engineering contract with Robinson Engineering in the amount of $208,000. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sepiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Boucher.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Item 9, I need a motion to table this till the next meeting. The attorney and myself are still vetting out the agreement. We still have some questions and changes that we'd like to have made that we're still working with.
So moved, second.
We have motion by Alderman Jefferson, seconded by Alderman Albert, to table the Route 66 Community Monuments Memorandum of Understanding Agreement between the Heritage Corridor Convention and Visitors Bureau and the city of Crest Hill. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Mark Sepiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Boucher.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
And Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
The next item is just closeout paperwork on the 2019-2020 MFT program. I'm looking for an authorization to approve a supplemental MFT resolution in the amount of $115,404.36 to match this dollar spent in that fund year of 2019 and 2020.
So moved, as presented.
We have motion by Alderperson Oberlin, seconded by Alderman Jefferson, for the approval of the supplemental MFT resolution to match the spent MFT dollars for the fund year 2019-2020 in the amount of $115,404.36. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Boucher.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
And Mark Sepiti.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
The next item's still related to the MFT 2019-2020 closeout. I need a motion to authorize the approval to have the mayor sign all MFT paperwork for the MFT funds spent during that 2019-2020 MFT fund year. for the MFT funds spent during that 2019-2020 MFT fund year.
So moved. Just presented.
We have a motion by Alderperson Overland, seconded by Alderman Jefferson, for the approval of the grant of monument easement between the Lockport Park District and the City of Crest Hill for an easement for the placement of a city welcome sign along Broadway or Route 53. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Claudia Giselle?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Mark Sepiti?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kubal?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
John Boucher?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
That's all I have on the agenda. The only thing I wanted to bring to council attention, I did receive an email today from the Will County Engineer. They did go out and modify the timing at City Center Boulevard and Weber. So basically, it's Weber turning down City Center to give us a little more time. We're going to see how that works. If that solves our problem, we're good. If not, there is an alternate solution that will basically, we can have, paint out one of the duals, just have a single left to allow left-hand turns during the green cycle. But there would be a cost share for that. So at this point, I just wanted to see how this additional time works. If it solves our problem, then we'll leave it as is. If not, we'll, I'll come back to you. And we can talk about it at a workshop. So that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. You've been very busy, I see.
Yep.
Any questions or comments of the city engineer? All right, thanks, Ron. Community development, we do not have any agenda items. To our Police Department, our Police Chief, Ed Clark. Good evening, Ed.
Evening, Mayor and Council. I don't have any agenda items this evening. I did want to announce that tomorrow, the Police Department will be participating in the torch run for Special Olympics. They're going to begin their, their run at 53 and Caton Farm. The route's going to go up to Len Kabinsky. From Len Kabinsky, we're going to be going to the City Hall for a quick photo op at the memorial. And then from there, we're going to go back to Caton Farm. And then east to Oakland, Oakland to Rayner, Rayner to Elsie, and Elsie to Kelly, and then Kelly south to St. Joe's, where we'll be handing off to Joliet Police Department. So if you guys have a few minutes to stop in or just kind of see us while they're running down the roadway there, it's a great event. It's kind of like the pinnacle of the Special Olympics. Eventually, the torch ends up, I believe, in Springfield. And that's where they'll hold the Illinois Special Olympics. So very thankful that we have a lot of participants. And it's just a good cause for Special Olympics. With that, I'd entertain any questions.
Any questions of the police chief?
I won't be able to stop him, but if he can make you run all the way to Weber, my house.
Down and around?
Give you some cold water.
Who knows? I might just kind of drive around. You don't know.
Yeah, I was hoping you'd come through the drive-through at Newmark. So.
Have them all run by?
Sure. Three lanes, no waiting.
Okay, thanks, Ed.
Thank you.
Mayor's report. We took care of the proclamation. Just, it was a busy month for myself. Just want to extend some congratulations here. On May 17th, I attended the Chaney-Maji Dare Graduation. There were 50 students that graduated Dare from fifth grade. And on May 23rd, I attended the Richland Dare Graduation. There was about 85 graduates of the Dare Program from fourth grade. I want to certainly thank Officer Heidi Outlaw for everything she does for the Dare Program. She relates very, very well with the young students. I will tell you that both Chaney-Maji and Richland, both schools, the students were very respectful. They are very good children. And the ceremony that was held at both schools was very well attended by parents, grandparents, brothers, and sisters. On May 18th, I attended the Will County Police Memorial down at the courthouse in Joliet to honor all the slain police officers over the years in Will County, including the two from the City of Crest Hill, Jim Nink and Tim Simonson. On May 19th, I went to a ceremony by the Lockport Township Fire Protection District for the awards ceremony and recognition dinner of the firemen for the most serious calls and the actions of those firefighters and paramedics. And I will tell you that during the presentation, most of the calls were from the City of Crest Hill. Most involved heart attacks. But it was a good year because everybody survived. And some very serious accidents also. So our thanks to the Lockport Township Fire Protection District, who services not only Crest Hill, but half of Romeoville and most of Lockport, for, for their commitment to the safety as first responders to the City of Crest Hill. They certainly don't know how much they are appreciated with all the calls that we have in our, in our community alone. Finally, I certainly want to make a comment about our Memorial Day program on May 29th. It was the first one here. It was a rededication of the site. It was probably one of the highest-attended amount of people. We estimate there was about 200 people in attendance for the ceremony. We certainly honored all of our veterans who have passed away. And we have certainly honored our police officers who have passed away also. I want to thank everybody who participated for the program. I want to thank everybody who participated in help setting up for the program and the taking down of the program. And again, it is because of the veterans who gave their lives, it's for our police officers who gave their lives that we enjoy the freedoms that we have today and the quality of life that we have in the City of Crest Hill. So we look forward to making another ceremony next year on Memorial Day. And we wish that we would have that same crowd next year because that is a great show of support for our veterans and for our police officers. And we did have three World War II veterans in the audience. So that, there are very few of World War II veterans alive anymore. So that was a very, very special ceremony that we had. So with that, I would ask, that's it for my report. If there's any questions, I'll certainly try to entertain them.
Yes, Mayor, we have on the next agenda possible discussion about non-City Crest Hill employee to be walking through the city and giving tour to non-Crest Hill staff. This is in regard, the email that we get from Christopher Boucher in regard Lockport Township walking after nine hours touring. Some, I don't know if it's friends or family members. Did you get that email by chance?
I did.
Okay. I would like to put that in discussion because we have like sensitive information in offices. And I wasn't aware that we were allowed to walk in here after hours and tour.
Well, I don't think it was after hours.
Well, even.
When I seen her, it was during hours. And Katie from the Park District and Kathy, that used to be in that office at the old building, were all, all over the old building. And even though that Katie is not an employee of the City of Crest Hill, I do consider an employee of the Park District who we have a good relationship with, trying to build a better relationship with. But we can certainly discuss this at a work session if you would like to.
I don't.
I will, I will say this, that we have a lot of agenda items on June 12th. So if it could wait until later in the month when it's going to be a less busy evening.
Well, I'll just make it really quick for you. I, I don't disagree that we need to build and continue the relation with the Park District, but there is something called boundaries. And there's something called who you can bring into personal workplace when there is information from Treasure Department, Finance Office, even the Clerk Office. I mean, obviously, if you've seen it, you said you've seen it after hours. You came in here and there was people in here, correct? So that mean I can bring Mr. Stewart or someone? I mean, I can bring my whole family or my neighborhood, show them because it's tax-free money. Can I, I mean, is it open to all the council that we can bring any person and take them to a tour? I mean, if the Park District are able to do it, I think as elected official, we should be able to do it as well.
Okay, I'll have it on the June 25th work session.
Okay, thank you.
Well, Mayor, just like to make sure that the item I had on the last work session will be on this June 12th work session, the discussion of the public work vehicles.
It's on there.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Moving on to the city clerk's report, our city clerk, Christine Boucher-Hall.
Thank you. I just have a couple of reports tonight. We have a block party request for July 15th. They're asking to close off Elma Drive from the intersections of Inner Circle to Hoss Mer Lane. Counsel, your decision?
So moved. Second. We have a motion by Alderman Dyke, seconded by Alderman Boucher for the approval of a application for a block party for Elma Drive. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Giselle?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Mark Sepiti?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kubal?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
And John Boucher?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. We also have another request for a block party for June 23rd. They're asking to close off Locke Lane to Abbey Lane and Abbey Lane to Prestwick. Counsel, your decision?
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Alderman Albert, seconded by Alderperson Overland for the approval of an application for a block party for Locke Lane. Questions or comments?
Can we just add the fact that they want that rain date the next day for the record? They have it on their application that they want June 24th as a possible rain date.
Correct. Correct.
So I'd make that part of my motion.
I'll make it part of my second.
Okay, with the rain date added, roll call.
Claudia Giselle?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Mark Sepiti?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kubal?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
John Boucher?
Yes.
And Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. And the third item I have on there, unfortunately, we're going to have to table this until the next meeting. We're need to get an ordinance put together in order to surplus items. So that'll be on the next packet.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Albert, seconded by Alderperson Overland to table the approval of the surplus and donate previously used cable room gear to be repurposed in the Illinois Rock and Roll Museum Education Center. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Mark Sepiti?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kubal?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
John Boucher?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?